But I don't see anything on the camera. Can you hear us?
Can you hear us, Batina?
Yeah, she's muted. Hi, Batina, can you hear us? She's muted, right? Hi, can you hear us? I think she's muted.
Yeah.
Let me, let me message her. Dina? I send her a private message. No, it's not me, it's her that's. Can you hear us now?
Yeah, she went off.
Okay.
I can hear you now.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
Your Lord, thank you for everything we gathered here today. Thank you for our wonderful city and the wonderful country that we live in. We pray for this country, we pray from your hand, from all of us, all the leaders and places, and help us seek wisdom in this one place, to speak people, to help us make good decisions, to only make our sitting upwards on this Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state of God, one indivisible.
Notice is here by even that a regular city council meeting of a town with an number three states, this will be held Wednesday, the 13th of October, 2021, at 6:00 AM. Councilmember Carter? Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Tolan?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Orell? Councilmember DeGalego?
Yep.
Mayor Smith?
It's Mr. Water, he wants to like, he has a funeral. Obviously, he will not be.
He's gonna try to make it later on.
Open forum at this time, audience is allowed five minutes per verse to address the council on the 80th. There is no special or full actions taking here in this jail. No. On same agenda item. All matters listed under this item are routine by the council and will be acted upon by one motion. There will not be a single discussion of these items. So it will be the minutes from July the 13th, almost the 30th, September the 7th, September the 14th, or 2021. Any discussions or changes?
And so, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Orell?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGalego?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. New business. Special consideration of possible action and job performance, financial reports, review of monthly financial reports.
Yes, we have updated forms on your desk. Any questions?
Were there any significant changes or anything changed from last one?
The only thing is a 3%.
That was added.
That added for the.
Yeah, but we know about that.
Yes. And then we had a. It's been repaired. Yeah, there was a, when it was sent first, the ones that are in your packet, they're not correct. There was a ready updated, yeah, it was a timeless, it's updated.
Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, it's not necessary to, to actually.
Works master plan, presentation of the new works master plan by surprise.
Yes, let me just get you a. Someone.
Just while we're handing that out. Remember, I don't know if you remember, but the whole beginning of the year is saying we ask the story, so we can prepare this, we need to do grant applications. Sure, and this is the document.
I'll send you. A copy, because Councilwoman Tolan? The chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll email you a copy.
Thank you.
Yes. What I did, I used the format of the city of Forney, because they had, information was closer. And what I did is that. There, they use the concept that the Texas park wildlife recommends. So, everything that we have in here is based on what they recommend to have. So, when we applied for them, that they would have this park plan. As you can see, I included within our parks, description of our parks, and what they have. And the concept, like I said the last time, Facebook one is where we are now. So, when you look at the first pages, it talks about what our statistics are, population, age median, ethnicity, and how that changes. We compared it with the Texas and the national on here. So, if you see the 50 different charts, the next phase, and that's where we included a description of our parks. I included also the equitures and center, because that is a park in our community. And the canal, it said to put future, like, parks that we see envisioned, I put that, also the, the skate park, along with Corso Lat Park, with the sports park, even though the, they, they're good, they might, you know, change it, but right now, it's still up in the air. Other descriptions that, then we talked about. Here, the observations of the parks, and then the next faces. Where do we go? Where do you want to go? And the idea is, is that we, we, they had a survey done back in 2019, the former city manager had a public survey, and there was percentages of what the people wanted. And it's in here, it's interesting, they wanted swimming pool, but the high percentage, a dog park, and access to the bay, those were three, you know, one. But, and also for the activities, they wanted yoga, zumba, and other types of physical activities as events at the park. So. And we discussed also the festivals we have here, and the runs, and it's all in the report here, the plan. And from there, we went toward the, see, how do we get there? And of course, we get there with planning, we get there with, with funds, you know, when we go out for grants, and this is one of the big reasons why this was created for that reason. And then, from there, documents and adoption at the back shows you what, some of the ideas that we want for the future. And this is the work, I mean, we could use this board, but I'm gonna send this to, a copy to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, they will look at it and critique it, and if there's something they could send it back. And then, of course, we're gonna present it again to the Parks Board, and I think to all the boards, even to the CDC, so we can see what we're doing. So, if there's any question, I can email you a copy, or if you are, and if there's, there's some there if you want to take.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if you want any, add anything, or just make little notes later.
Any questions?
I presented you them before, with that, I presented them before for any input, but we could have, it was done before for the parks, what's the, the Parks Rec, when Sister Geller was here, you had, yeah, yeah, meetings.
So, yeah, I'm suggesting for service, I think that makes sense to bring in for the parks for the creation, so they can have all their, you know, the parts more, you know, that's.
Yes.
So, when is that next meeting?
I, when's the next meeting? I'm not sure. We haven't had any meetings, so we're got to.
I would love for all these boards to be at least, you know, orderly.
Yeah, and that was our goal.
And also, to the parks and wildlife, so they can quickly get that.
Yes.
And I'll need one of our grand, right, just the grand.
Grand works, that was an excellent idea, to send a copy to them, so they could say, okay.
It was using random. I'm sorry, it's pretty good. I just want to say, really happy that we finally got to have something in our hands, and I know my thoughts are also, thank you. That looks pretty good. Yeah, that's the one I saw like that. Any other discussion, questions?
Also, the only thing that's lacking there are the maps, I'm having someone do a professional. Unless you want.
And the pictures?
Pictures?
Yeah, like the picture of the veterans part, it's a little.
Yeah, that, I'll get a better one.
Mr. Mason, can we especially put it on our table next month as well? So, we just fast talk to, you know, the progress that was made.
Yes.
And. And also with the parks, hopefully the parks can be reported in this.
Okay, we'll do that.
I can see EMT paramedic cross-training consideration, also actually cross-training to these officers as EMT and paramedics for enhanced service to our community. I put this on the agenda, as you'll know, our ambulance services being a big. Over in my side and all of our sides for a long time. And I just, I've considered any options to run to do and help to embrace the situation. You know, as we know, some of you were not here, but buying a new ambulance costs about $450,000. The staff to run it annually will be about $200,000, $700,000. You know, I would love to have that money, we don't, you know, and we have a contract with those persons. And I was just, you know, I'm, I'm just really trying and finding to, I just like wrecking my brain honestly. And then I talked to the chief about this, and this actually idea he has had as well before. And I was thinking, let's, if we can consider cross-training, some of our officers as EMT officers and as paramedics, or all of them if they want to, or whatever the council agrees upon. So that, whenever an officer is gone to a 911 call, and the ambulance takes 15 minutes to get here, which it sometimes does unfortunately, we leave our location, but it's often faster. We had another situation on Tuesday where it took five minutes. But regardless, I just feel this is something that could serve our community better, you know, when, when I know the police officers already have basic training. They have, they can do CPR, they can clear airways, they can stop major needs, they're AED trained, that's the battle that you can shop with when there's a party every day. So, they all have basic training. But we were thinking adding an EMT training, and if either all, also paramedic training for anybody that is wanting to do that. I think that would just great, if the officer can show up, and the ambulance takes longer, we already have that care for our community, it's a service that can provide for the community, since we don't have an ambulance. So, that's something I thought about. You know, of course, I was thinking the plus for the training, we can get from healthcare for our money, this could be public money that we can use for the training, and we can even request from the county, from their care as money. This will also include, obviously, by the time somebody passed, an increased salary, of course, meaning there's higher training involved. So, this were my thoughts. Any discussions, questions?
Chief. Yes, do, do we have interested personnel and something like that? I just had a meeting, all personnel said they would do it, they're gonna serve the city in many functions, but.
So, that were, they were all.
Yeah. So, there's another EMT, it would take us a long time to come very much, okay? And there's another, and it's a little cheaper, $1,500 versus $3,000. It's called MR, MR, EMR. And it's just. A tad level under EMT, but with our medical director, they would be allowed to do, because they, any first responder can only do what's the medical director, like, we relax. Well, we'd still be allowed to do the same as an EMT, as an EMRS, and the training there is only $1,500.
And you said that Mr. Walters, Neil Walters, can do the training here in Laguna Vista, they don't have to go to Houston.
Yes, there's a brand who can do the training there.
And it'll be $1,500 per officer, correct?
$1,500 versus 3,000.
And how long will it take?
Said, well, weekends, everything else, probably about. Eight to 12 weeks.
Oh, well, that's short. I thought it would be, I thought it was eight to 12 months.
For the EM, the EMR, because EMT, then we come into prolonging, because you would have to go to Orange Gym, and then you have to do different practicals on. Certain things, I'm not sure. And then. Myself and Officer Cruz, looking into, looking into. A class, if y'all want this, a class, a refresher course, because what that ours expired, and mine's been. It's, it's been about 15 years, mine's been about 23.
Officer Cruz is a, is a, is a medic.
That is, that would be, that would be John Leos, and this is earlier, I thought to John Leos, and he failed the state test, so, so it's not a give me.
Yes.
So, it's not a give me, so, you know, some might not make it.
I like the idea. I think every minute we can, we can be on location and work on a patient, will save lives. And if we have the alternative with the $1,500 and still be able to, the way I understood it, with EMR, people could still do what a.
The base, the basic, a little harder than what we do, the basic fit, is allowed by our, because we follow the medical director's guidelines, a first responder, so we're volunteers, follow the medical director's guidelines. You know, what it does is, EMT, just there, they don't allow to do, you know, one of, one of them is, you know, you can check, and we're not certified, but the. Blood pressure. I mean, it's little things like that, that's just the difference. And then, if you go from EMT to paramedic, is where. Let's say there's a bigger accident, but then, even if it's just two EMTs and ambulance, they can't, they can't do IVs. So, instead we have to fall under that umbrella, and I found this other here arm, will be still, cost a little less, still right there, and. Follow under the guidelines for, for that.
I think it's a great idea. I think this is the best solution we can have right now, in the situation, but.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Chief, I have two questions. One is, while the officers are going through the eight to 12 weeks of training, what is the impact to the day-to-day police operations? One, and then secondarily, I think it would be prudent for us to look at, I, I'm guessing we're probably going to need to give these gentlemen a pay increase for these additional responsibilities. So, I think it would be prudent, before we make a decision on this, to know what the budget impact is going to be. Overall, depending on how many people get the training, pass the test, and then what that impact's going to be, and where that money's going to come from.
The impact of the day, for the daily activities, is going to be, it's the shift change, where we have cover shifts, in and out, you can get that done. And then it's gonna be, the impact, we can get that done, but the impact is, I think our budget is $1,500 overtime, but if they're going to class over here, we're gonna burn through that $1,500. As I said, we're gonna burn through that money pretty quick. So, I would say, after all that's done, and the training, it will be at a deficit, and regular overtime for the P D. As far as increases, that's up to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Lina, that was actually, that's a good, both of those are good questions. And that was actually the next thing that I was gonna discuss, is that, so while the officers are in training, that's gonna be on their overtime, which we will go through. So, we're gonna have to reconsider the budget regarding our overtime. I don't know how many hours that would be, Chief, if you could maybe help me with that?
I mean, I'm sure.
How many hours do you think they'll go over overtime? I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm sure it would all be.
Yes.
So, I don't, I don't know how many hours over.
Well, maybe that will be your running, and then also, we were talking about officers is very seldom in cross-trained, and they are very highly sought after, actually, when they are cross-trained like this.
Yes.
So, not compensate them for their time and their increased experience, we also wanna retain our officers.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, to not get offered somewhere else. Chief suggested a $3,000 to $5,000 salary, annual salary in this stipend for each officer that passes that exam. So, that's what we add. Goodbye. How long will that certification last? Do they need to go to? Are they training after that, or?
It, it is, it should be yearly, every two years, I'm sorry, two years, not, not, that's probably going every two years, I'm willing to go, every two years, then you have to go take a test, and you have a little refresher course, and you gotta take a test, you gotta pass the test.
And how much is that?
I don't know. I know it's, it's quite a hard question.
Um, can you, two discussions, Mr. Go Bay, I'm sorry, Mr. Lina.
Well, I was just gonna say, unless we feel that this is of such a pressing matter that we couldn't possibly table, table it to next month, and allow Chief to pull the numbers together. In terms of the training dollars, the salary increase dollars, and give us a complete sort of estimate of what the total cost would be for this project. I think that might be, I feel like that might be helpful to help us make an informed decision about how we might proceed on this. The other thing I would like to see is. What are the, what are the, what is the delta between the training the police officers have now in terms of life-saving, and then, then the capability they will have with this training? You know, he mentioned that, the chief mentioned that, you know, one of the things that they can't, can't do now is, you know, of course, taking blood pressure, but, and then, of course, the, with the new training, they still wouldn't be able to do, for example, start an IV. So, like, what is the delta of the, what is the delta between what they are capable, what they are trained to do now, and what they'll be able to do once they are certified with the new training, so that we have a full understanding of what it is we're buying in terms of this capability? You know, is it enough of a difference in terms of life-saving capability to make this decision? I think that would be helpful to know as well. And I don't, I'm not asking for that answer right now, I'm just saying, when we get the full set of information, that would be helpful to know.
You happen to know the difference between what the officers can do now, and what they would be able to do. Otherwise, we can do that.
Very basic, we're also.
Yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot now, Chief, for that information, I'm just saying, when we, when we have all the information, that would be another set of data that would be helpful, I think.
I mean, we're very basic, stop the bleeding, start the breathing. Live turn pit, CPR. You know, we want, I had everybody go, because we all have AEDs, I had everybody go, we certified, and the use of AED.
And that's already an extra training.
And that is, that's an extra training that people already have. So, that's usually where the first concern, to begin with, and, and it's last, that, that's really all we can do, you know, it depends, blood and temperatures and different things like that.
It is, it's a long list, but I think that's a good idea to postpone it for next month's meeting. So, but now we can hear what everybody wanted to ask, and there's some really good questions, thank you. And Chief, if you can please provide us with. The overtime you think it might be, so we can, so we can adjust our budget.
Okay.
As well as stipend. As well as a list of differences between our current training and, and future training.
And what reasonable, reasonable pay rate would be to retain the officers once, once they're trained? These don't, yeah, what, what's gonna be a reasonable, three to five, that's a. Five. You don't want.
Anything else anybody wants to add?
Get more away. I would say, I've done some research on that, and it's, it's higher than that, but it's, it doesn't, major difference is that. People who work here, they're front end. In my, at, you know, our front end, they live, you know. Like, figure it away, you know, this. You know, I think, well, they've got the training, and it's worth another $10,000 of what they're making, they should pay it. To spoil these grand and all, they need to work. Yeah, and, you know, a lot of younger guys, you gotta explain to them the difference, because we're gonna, this is very, I tell them all the time, I said, I said, until recently, CMRS, you've got to have a better retirement than par. I'm sorry. And you gotta look at that, you gotta look at all those different things, you know? And, you know, I tell the guys all the time, they'll always take care of us, you know, and, and all the time, and a lot of them like working, they're doing, so I think, they're probably what happens to top them, you know, because they're richer here.
I appreciate.
For the kids, yes, and I just, I think some say, so that number would be, yes, okay.
I'm sure too. And I know we've been in secret, there's other. I'm sure too. And I know we've been in secret, there's other reasons, we didn't pay um. Seven years ago, and we're starting to laugh a little bit there, so we will for sure move into that.
Yes, and we're, while we're talking about that, I just said, we're, we're, so years ago, it was like a nurse says, and uh. Have that one applicant. And the old people have, I do on Facebook, but they're not following directions. So I'm kinda like, well, if you can't follow directions now, you know, so I haven't had even a drop off and application and, and. Personal history package says it's part by law for takes officers, so you could put it that way.
Yeah. I have a question, Chief, just for, just on a side note, what if the communities have officers that are multifaceted, if you will, like this?
No one in the valley.
No one in the valley.
There's grapevine, they're cross-trained in E M Ts, firemen, and police officers.
Small community.
Thanks, Chief.
To postpone this to next week's meeting, next month's meeting, I apologize. Motion of the mayor, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez to postpone this item to next month's meeting.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Orrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebell?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-one twenty-eight, consideration of possible action to nominate other Zuna's nominee for position nine of the camera appraisal. The street board of Larry, Mr. Smith.
Yes, um, last time we had the representative was our attorney, I believe, so. Actually, two terms ago, two terms ago, I ran last time.
I have a comment. So um. One of our ex-council members is on that board for, for that he does serve on. And notes that the person that is serving this community for that position that you're going for never goes to the meeting. So we have to, yes, we, and. Communities to try to at least, I mean, I don't know if they wanna nominate our representative. But we have to, we have to put somebody in place that's gonna make an effort to show up to the meetings, cause it's important. Can't just be filling seats just to fill the seats, it's not, it's not.
When is the election? When do you vote?
Certainly, and, and if the council nominates me, I will, I will reach out to these communities with votes directly.
Councilmember Carter?
We'll gladly say yes.
Councilmember Howard?
So yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Orrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebell?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion fast. Item E, resolution. Just uh, before I go on, are you guys all here from Port Isabel?
Yes.
I'm sure you obviously are ready right now. Would you guys like to jump in?
I pass these out because since we didn't have the internet working, but I'll go to the slideshow.
Okay, good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor Smith, councilmen, councilwomen, members of the audience. Mr. Menza, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to present this information to the evening. My name is Terry Cuckstein. Proud superintendent of our Point of Spalise East School District. Um, we have some of our guests today. I'm gonna get out of them to introduce themselves, beginning with our board member.
Cecilia Vasquez, board member, fifteen years of her service and going strong.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, we get the Los Santos, I work with China Horse and Company. We have a pleasure of serving at financial advisors in the school district. And we've been accompanying them at different functions. In case there's some questions that are financially nature that they can't take care of, we'd be happy to answer.
Kristy Gonzalez, I'm the chief finance officer at Point of Spalise.
So thank you so much. So a little bit about Point of Spalise, our, our school district serves approximately. Uh, one thousand nine hundred fifty students. We have four campuses that we will be conducting today. And we serve pre-K three, uh, we added pre-K three last year through twelve breaks. So the last bond that was held in our district was in two thousand. And in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, our school district began evaluating the needs of the district. Our school board, along with our school district administrators, visited all of the campuses. And to evaluate what were the current um needs of the campus and, and look at expanding opportunities. Um, available for our district. Uh, over the summer, uh, obviously COVID happened. And everything was paused. But over this summer, we started up again and looking and evaluating what were we had started back in the fall of twenty nineteen. We included our financial advisors and throughout this process, we also included our community members from South Padre, from Port Isabel. And from Laguna Vista. And we're proud to say that Councilwoman Howard was part of our commi- uh, committee as well. And, and, and all of you interject at any of the times that you, we have a slide and that you have a question. So uh.
I said, Mr. Curtis White.
Yes, yes. Uh, Ms. Aldo Mica, part of, was also part of our committee. Yes, thank you, ma'am. So in August twenty-nine, in tw- August sixteen, twenty twenty-one, um, after much discussion, evaluation. And uh, input from our committee and our school district, uh, in addition, I felt to, to mention. We had input from all of our staff. Over the summer, we asked for surveys, information, what they felt was needed at the campuses and district-wide. So our school board approved of calling for a bond election in the amount of forty-two million five hundred thousand dollars. Without an increase to our district's current tax rate. And you will see that in the end of these slides. So.
So we had this particular slide, what's the bond election. Many of you know, a lot of young voters that haven't, that uh, didn't vote in two thousand and six. Have never probably voted in the bond election, like a school bond election anyway, since there hasn't been one here. So in essence, what the voter is going to the polls to either vote for, to authorize school board to borrow money, improve school facilities. Or against not to authorize school board to borrow money to. The election is one ballot, one ballot that will be presented. And this is, this is a sample ballot prepared by Cameron County Elections Office. Uh, on the one ballot, there are three propositions, proposition A, B, and C. So the voter will have the option of voting for A, B, and C, or not for A, B, and C, or for A and B, but not C, and so on. So the voter will have an opportunity to uh pick and choose. The way that uh, it didn't used to be this, this way until the last legislative session. Where the legislator said that bond propositions to communities should be more specific as to what they're doing with their bonds. In proposition A, you will see in a minute that there are certain items that are being uh presented there. B is a little bit different, and C is quite a bit different.
Like that, do you want to talk about the tax with education?
In each of the propositions, you're going to see at the very bottom, in, in the capitals, capital letters. Uh, this is a property tax increase. The reason that it is a property tax increase. We're, we're not saying that, we're saying that the tax rate itself is not going to, does not need to increase. In order to be able to service the debt on these bonds. However, since if the bond didn't pass, then the district would be in a position to return three or four pennies to the taxpayers. Then one could say those three or four pennies would be returned to the taxpayer, but they're gonna remain to pay for the bonds. So as a consequence, all propositions are going to have, this is a tax increase. Now, the way that the district is proposing the bond to the community is, this is not a tax rate increase. The tax rate is one dollar, zero, 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 nine, or one, one, one dollar, and less than a penny. Uh, as it is right now, and it would remain the same. The first proposition.
So the tax rate won't increase. So what's the, what's gonna be the change in your M and O and your I N S?
Yeah, the I N S currently is four cents. It services the debt that is currently outstanding from two thousand and six. The debt service is approximately one point six million dollars. Every penny in, in the Point of Spalise raises four hundred thousand dollars. And revenues. The M and O is dictated by state. The M and O, every year, every legislative session, the state will say, your values have gone up by so much. Therefore, if they've gone up a lot, you need to reduce, you need to reduce the tax rate accordingly. So that will fluctuate. The district on the I N S side. On the I N S side, you need four pennies to service current debt. It's two thousand and six.
I'm asking about future.
I, I can't predict future. I'm telling you that one dollar and nine cents will, and the district will balance M and O and I N S.
I understand that. I'm just curious, what is your proposed tax rate for next year? It won't go up. So how much lower will my M and O be versus my I N S next year?
Next year, your, your M and O and your I N S total will be one dollar and.
That's, that's not the question, though. The M and O funds the school district, the operations of the school district. Okay, so how much lower is my M and O gonna be next year versus where it is this year?
I don't see it. Christie?
Well, this year, it's like the, well, each year the state compresses our tax rate, so we can't really predict or project. Of course, depending on the, the increase of the values, the, the more the, the values increase, the more compression that we get. So it depends.
It's, it's not, it's not in our hands. You know, the state. The state will dictate what the M and O rate is going to be.
So proposition A, proposition A will be in the amount of twenty-six million nine hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And every uh dollar in this, in this proposition, and in the others. Will be in one way or another directly impacting student and student education. So for our elementary campuses, we are looking at having an outdoor uh playground that is ADA compliant. For both Jerry and Perquaria Elementary and that have a covered area. If COVID has taught us anything, it's the need for students to be able to go outside and to enjoy. And to have a learning space, not just inside, indoors, but outdoors as well. So we're looking at having ADA compliant playground areas at both of our elementaries with a walking trail. Again, knowing that the academics is, is so critical for our students, but so is the social emotional uh learning aspect of it. And so understanding uh the importance, the significance of physical outdoor learning area. So having uh walking trails that connect different uh areas of the campus to the playground. And to other areas of the, of the campus. In addition, uh, there is a huge need for renovation of the restroom. So again, all of this at both Jerry and uh Grega Elementary. So this past uh year and a half, we have applied for numerous grants. We have received a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar Texas workforce, uh, jobs in education and training, a jet grant. And a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar jet grant. So in, in the matter of two years, we received two Texas Workforce Commission uh, uh grants. In addition, we've received a hundred and twenty thousand dollar of Musk Foundation grant. So with those funds, we purchased Project Lead the Way, which are STEAM-based, science, technology, engineering. Of arts and the medical field program. That is starting from elementary, junior high, and high school. So there is the need to create a STEAM classroom, so that our students are receiving a curriculum and opportunities. For um, to prepare them, to expose them to jobs in our area. In manu- advanced manufacturing, in the medical field, um, in space techs, engineering. It starts at the elementary level. Uh, so those are the science upgrades at both campuses. For junior high, again, going back to outdoor learning, looking at creating this beautiful uh multi-purpose learning facility. So if you want to get the junior high, uh, if I'm facing the junior high to the far left. There's ample space to create a permanent structure, a permanent learning facility. That could be used again for outdoor classes, outdoor learning, or performances uh available to all of our students. We go back to our science upgrades, because we have Project Lead the Way and higher-level sciences at the junior high. Uh, again, uh renovation and upgrading of the athletic locker rooms. That are ADA compliant. So our restrooms, our showers, our seating area. Um, to be ADA compliant for all of our students. Also, uh, outdoor fencing, safety and security, parking lot upgrades at the campuses. And at our junior high, our junior high school does not have a stage. And why is that important? Our, our performances, our, our fan concerts, our talent shows, awards night. Uh, if you've been uh seeing our junior high, you know that we don't have a stage for our students to be showcased. So we have an area part of our uh practice gym that would be dedicated to add a state. Similar to our two campuses, our elementary, uh, Jerry and Grega Elementary. So, and all of this, again, is based on feedback that the campuses gave us. That's at the junior high. High school, we have a nine hundred seating facility. It's a beautiful facility that does not have sound system, that, that is proper sound system, proper lighting. Uh, so this is, again, these are all depictions of pictures. This is basically what uh our auditorium looks like, except with a proper lighting. So this would be available not just to our district. All of these uh facilities that we're showing here, we want to make available to our community. Uh, we have partnered, we're partners in education with everyone in our community. This past year, we hosted uh the police game uh at our, at our, at our district. So we housed part of the, the weightlifting, the, the basketball tournaments, and there were some field events. So our school district property, we open it up to our community. So imagine if you all ever have a need to say, we need to host a, a meeting, a large meeting, we wanna house other folks. This would also be available uh for anyone in our community. Uh, also looking at upgrading our science lab, our career in technology. Also looking at upgrading our science lab, our career in technology. So two years ago, we evaluated our curriculum and we saw a huge need to offer additional opportunities for our students. We already had the welding class, but our equipment was not up to date. And that's where we applied for our Texas Workforce Solution Jobs and Education Training Grant. And we received the equipment, but we need a facility to house that, that is in a area, again, an environment similar to the opportunities available in our area. So we increased areas of certification, we added the N C C R certification and welding that was not there before. We're adding robotics, culinary arts. We've enhanced that program, advanced manufacturing. We've added health science technology. We were not offering the health science pro, technology program that is not going to offer areas of certification. Perfect, exactly what you're talking about in lobotomy, the, the, the medical aspect, as well as the informatics or medical billing and coding, or the CNA. This is new to our district. We did not, two years ago, we did not have a health science technology program new to our area. This year, we added engineering. We have SpaceX, they're bringing in engineers from out of, of the area. We want to expose our students to the engineering and cybersecurity. All of those are new programs that we offered through Project Lead the Way. In addition to adding classroom renovations, as well as our band hall renovations and updates, about our junior high and high school. Again, all under proposition A. Proposition A also, our tennis courts, we have a tennis team and they've advanced to the next level. They will be competing tomorrow. They're taking on today and tomorrow. But do you know where our students, where we house our school district tennis tournaments? In Brownsville, because our facilities are not compliant, compliance with U I L. So that means when Point Isabelle I S D hosts a tennis tournament, that's then in Brownsville. So our money goes to Brownsville, our other districts go to Brownsville and they buy food from Brownsville. We do not have the facilities. Our, our community serves us to bring our people here and expose them to our area. So we're looking at adding new tennis courts with a seating area. And then enclose our current tennis court for whatever academic needs that we would have. In addition, we're looking at turfing our softball and our baseball field. Proposition B, so proposition A, and this is by law that categorizes all of the improvements. Because most of those are in a small group classroom setting. Proposition B is the turf of the football field, an additional stadium seating. Because right now, we're having our football game on Friday, we're moving around bleachers and bringing our students. Now want to have a student section. They all want to sit together, this showed school spirit. And we're having to bring in portable bleachers because we do not have enough seating for our students. So we're looking at adding additional seating for our home site, as well as our visitor site. Because the U I L has now stated a new rule that if a visiting team comes in and requires, or the word is demand under U I L. They can demand fifty percent of our seating for the visitor site. So we would definitely need additional seating, tennis court board, and fencing around the area for security. Proposition C is in the amount of twelve point five million dollars. And that would be for an enclosed aquatic center. And we are looking at offering swimming lessons to our elementary students. Every student, and by the time they left elementary, would have gone through swimming lessons. We can continue at the junior high's level. And then the goal is to have a swim team by high school. We're surrounded by water. We have had several tragedies of people that do not know how to swim in our area. And the goal is that every student that graduates from Point Isabelle I S D will have gone through our swimming programs, starting from the elementary. In addition, we again are looking at offering this enclosed area to our community. So I've, I've talked to some of your residents and, and, and actually, Chris, now we're talking and we said, okay, well, we can open up the aquatic center in the evening. If, if this is available and they, they told me, said, no, none in the evening, we're, we're asleep by seven, eight o'clock. It has to be in the morning at six o'clock. We can, we can definitely do that. So we would want it to truly be a community aquatic center that would be available for everyone. And actually, when it was, one of your residents that said, how swimming is very therapeutic and muscle and the joints for them. So again, our students would benefit, but our entire community would benefit. And again, think of, if we have this, we have a swim team, we're again, are able to host swim turn, swimming tournaments here. And expose more of valley people, state people to our community. And the goal is to expose them to this incredible community that has them safe. Now, how will we pay for this?
The way that school bonds are paid, when you have a general, general obligation, they're called general obligation bond, because you go through an election. It's through the INS tax part of the property. You have M and O, and you have INS. So local property taxes on the INS side specifically designated to pay for the bonds. You can't use it for anything else. In the case of the bonds that you have right now, you have, what you have outstanding, you use four pennies to pay for the bonds. There will be no tax rate overall increase. You said that necessary to pay for the bonds. Because, by the way, I am going to speak to Mr. Carter's question in a minute. It is on the slide, to pay for the bonds because the current tax rate levels, which is one dollar and almost one penny, one, one dollar and almost a penny. Those levels are sufficient to service the current debt, as well as the new bond debt payments that would come up with a new bond. The funds collected through the INS taxes, this is very important to school districts, it doesn't apply, doesn't apply to municipalities, like this to school districts. Especially rich school districts. When I say rich, it's property rich. The state takes all of the values of a school district, divides them by the number of students, gets it for pupil value. And if it's higher than a certain amount, it gets like four, five hundred thousand per pupil. You become a property-rich school district. And you all have heard of the Robin Hood plan and school finances, so, so forth. This district, when it collects four hundred thousand dollars on the M and O side for operations, sends back two hundred thousand. So the state takes those two hundred thousand and they help poor districts like those Fresno's and other surrounding school districts. This just happens to be a very rich school district. Main reason is your island, you have very, very valuable properties there and not very many kids come out of those properties. So when you divide those values of those properties by the few kids on this side of, of the bay, you're rich. So the beauty of this particular part, the INS taxes, the state does not recapture. So if you added a penny to your INS tax rate, and you raised four hundred thousand dollars with that penny, you keep the four hundred thousand dollars. You don't send two hundred to the state and keep only two hundred. So by law, we said this earlier, and an election, election ballot, ballot has to state that this is a tax rate increase. However, the district tax rate will not increase from twenty twenty-one, or it was last year, it is this year. The taxpayers will pay the same amounts unless the Cameron County appraisal district raises your values, and that happens, you know, very regularly. So, but the board does not have any control over, like you don't have any control over appraisal district increasing values. Now, if you look at how much more will, will I pay in taxes, we ask. The way that it is, if the stronger the values remain at the levels that they are right now, the increase in your tax bill would not increase. Because the tax rate, the total tax rate of the school district will remain at one dollar and less than one cent. The, it's, I thought it was up there, but it's not. In your brochures, to answer Mr. Carter's question, what's going to happen to the M and O and the INS? In twenty twenty-one, your M and O was ninety-six, sixty-four. It's on, it's the last page. It says tax rate impact. So you had ninety-six, sixty-four and oh, four, two, six for the INS to pay the bonds, one, zero, zero, nine, zero. This year, you have ninety-six, eighty-four. We said, it's unpredictable, it could go, M and O could go up or down depending on what the state does. Your INS is four oh six, same over tax rate. Twenty twenty-three, we're predicting a decrease from the state based on values, ninety-five, thirteen. The, the tax rate for INS would be zero, five, seven, seven. Notice that we have our lower before those. Under the INS tax rate, once that five, seven, seven settles, it's probably going to stay there. But what the district concept is to balance the M and O and the INS and the commitment that the district is making is that the total tax rate would be one dollar points. And that's what, when you get your bill, most taxpayers are going to say, how much am I INS and then, how much am I paying for? How much am I paying for every one hundred dollars of value, one dollar and zero, zero, nine cents? As a matter of information, in the Cameron County I S D, the Point Isabelle I S D is the lowest tax rate of any, of any entity or school district in Cameron County. One of the reasons for that, one of the reasons for that is you haven't had a bond since two thousand and six. Those Fresno's has had, so Brownsville has had not very many, they borrow in other ways that are not as good as, as bond elections. Because in bond elections, you give the community the opportunity to vote for or against. It's a community decision. Look at Harlan's in one seventeen, they've had several bond elections. And if you look at both Fresno's, and if you look at all the M and Os for these school districts, they're all going to be in the ninety-five, ninety-six percent rate, the state dictates it. The Point Isabelle is the lowest, and they're also the lowest in the whole region, whether Brownsville to Laredo. One dollar and nine cents, you can't see them, but out of thirty-seven districts in the region, one area for Isabelle is the lowest. One of the reasons for that is that for many years, the board would not raise the M and O tax. Because it would say, hey, we're going to raise a penny, we're going to get four hundred, four hundred thousand and two hundred is going to the state. We're not going to, we don't want to send any more money to the state. We want to keep our money for our kids. So that was one of the reasons in past, when the state didn't dictate the M and O side, they do dictate it now. And then one comment regarding those of us who are over age sixty-five and are property owners, homeowners, if you will, that have a home state exemption and an exemption for age over, over sixty-five. The tax will not increase from the year that your tax exemption is approved by the county. We have the voting dates and the voting places, I believe, next week, because earlier next week, I see early voting starts. All of that, we, the times are there, they're in the brochures, I won't go all alone, voting places are there. Election day is November the second, seven AM to seven PM, with five voting locations. The main thing that the district is trying to do is get the information out, so the voters will make some decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Any questions? Thank you guys for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing us to read that presentation.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome to leave. You don't have to. Unless you want. It was just a presentation. I know that was not emotional. Let's go on with, I can be resolution twenty, twenty-one, twenty-seven, Cameron County, arena venue. Consideration possible action for a resolution in support of the new Cameron County arena venue. Considered by the county during November the second election. Judge Eddie reached out to me last week and talked about this arena that, that. There was some paperwork that you proceeded in your attachment. Anyways, this is a, this is a venue that I want to build, and it's on the intersection, essentially across the street from Branch of the Apple. This is a facility that the county wants to build. It's a multi-seat facility, and it's going to be seat about ten thousand people. And they're looking to bring concerts to the city venues, you know, they can even do graduations there, indoor graduations, bigger things, weddings, big weddings, big parties. They're going to build restaurants around it, and eventually there, this will not be the county though, but they're looking to hold a development around it as well. This is not going to cost us anything. As you can see, it's by the visitors, giving us that faithfulness. It's going to cost about ten million dollars. The total of this is one and three billion is pretty involved. I wanted to make sure that that's not, that's not what we're going to pay. That's for all the development around it. The actual venue is about ten million. It'll be paid for by visitor tax. I'm not presenting this on the screen through the slides. They're asking for our support.
Visitor tax is funded by hot cats.
Yeah.
Rental cars.
Yes.
Those.
Hotel, hotel, so everybody that visits here, paying hotels, rental cars.
Hotel rental.
Yes, and all those.
Those YouTube videos.
Yes, and all those little bits hold up to the street venues. The county believes this will bring benefits to our community, bring, instead of going to the alcohol concerts. So currently artists and stands are really interested in smaller venues. So that's what's going to happen. Any questions or discussion? Where, where is it being built here?
They're building the other one here.
That's the, somebody else says, I don't know where that is. They said to this. Where is it going to be built at? This will be across the street on, from Russell Vehicle.
You know, you know, we're selling like, yeah.
You know, the middle again, yeah, all that land behind that. So this part that they're asking our approval is just for the multi, multi-faceted, kind of like this picture presents.
That's only.
Yeah, it's kind of like open door. It'll be in the intersection of those one and say sixty-four, seven, seven. But it's, it's that land, you can come out of branch, so there's a bunch of farm land right there. So, and they're looking to, that they rent a whole. Anyway, so.
Between there and highway one hundred is sixty.
Yeah.
I mean, there's definitely a need. If you want to go to anything like this, you gotta go to the county.
Yeah.
Pretty nice. We've got twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes versus.
Yeah.
How about that?
What's, what's crucial, I think, is that this will really improve our community as a whole, but it's not something we don't have to pay. You know, it's going to come out of the hot front, so. So there's a resolution, a sample resolution that they gave that they'd like us to. So choose.
I'm going to come over to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven, Cameron County area. Arena and venue.
So much for my supporters and some of the others to do the resolution and level support. Cameron County.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tala?
Yes.
Fonsadas?
Yes.
Corral?
Yes.
Councilmember Digamell?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yeah. Mr. Mason, please make sure that the sign will be. So this gets.
At the end of the meeting.
Thank you guys. Item A, stipend for staff consideration, potential actions to improve the stipend payment for staff and COVID funds for excellent service and service excellence throughout the pandemic. And then I put this on here, I noticed that one of the suggestions of COVID funds used Jesus' stipend. It's essentially a bonus to staff, and I felt like that was just a really, that was a really neat thought for our staff. Because no matter what happened, our staff showed up every day. They threw the whole thing, they were all year, through lockdowns, all the offices, nobody didn't show up. And I think that's, you know, they, they actually get another chance because our city would just malfunction, but.
You know, now we have more information and we feel a little bit more secure, but there was a long time there, we were very scared and very confused and. And it was, we didn't know what was going on, but these people just still showed up. So some of the, some of the suggestions on these COVID funds are the Siphon to staff, just I think. Or showing up for. Still taking the risk, still being there and still keeping this. So that was my discussion. First one we got was. Which a hundred thousand or so, one sixty we're going to use for police officers, all that wants to improve in the budget. So this is just a start money that we have missed, Mr. Lynn, thank you for that, by the way, saying. Some more suggestions, I have.
You're welcome.
You can do with these COVID funds, there's pretty strict regulation on what you can use it for, but it's also not that strict, it's pretty. Really going to also reach out to the county for some of their money. And hopefully we can get that, so.
It was actually less restrictive than I realized when I participated in that. And found out people were using it for drainage projects and purchasing of equipment and all kinds of, you know, different projects. It was really enlightening.
Any, any questions to this?
What's the number? It looks like our total question, like that's.
What's left?
Yeah, like one of the.
Well, there was three hundred and eighty.
She's just telling me that we got the second half.
And then we got the second.
I did the.
What was that one?
Six hundred and eighty seven thousand, right?
And that was still.
So this needs to be able to see it.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand, but. We can almost get the whole row in, but.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I, I, I'm not against it whatsoever.
No, I don't understand that you want to see that work, we should have done that.
It's something that we should definitely move forward on. I think it's a great idea. And just, and we can put some numbers down and figure out the budget for those.
This is the ones or this is not a salary.
No, no, this is the one time, yeah, golden payment, and I think it's a great idea.
As a total?
Eighteen?
Eighteen. Eighteen. So.
Seventeen, sorry.
Oh, that's right.
So I was thinking if you can start considering at five hundred, that's eight thousand five hundred dollars.
You know, I know the school, the school district gave seven fifty to everybody.
Yeah.
And they, they were all so happy about it, but this is a great. Starting point.
We got six hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. Additional, which we have not used.
Should we go check?
Card or that. We're talking about, oh, let's use that money for that, that's. I don't remember what we want to use it for, just if we have it inviting. Yes, that's just absolutely. More comfortable, I think it's a great idea. But I just wanted to.
And you know, and only because I don't want to short them. And, and I don't want to overbudge, you know what I mean, it's, that's fine, that's.
So I'll make a motion.
Yeah, before we make any noise about it, I just wanted to, and you may have heard me talk about this before, the issue of the bonus and potential. Constitutional prohibitions on just public funds. The way around that for something like this would be to ensure that there is one component of it that is at least contingent on something true. In other words, we want to say pretend that, right, that, that anyone who's retention, anyone who worked through the pandemic. If you will stay employed with us through, through the end of the year or through the month of, end of November. And the impact of this, especially Siphon, just so as long as we have something to know that's continued along for the performance or something.
Excuse me.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion on the floor to approve the Siphon for the staff. Based on something we'll discuss at our next meeting. Including. What Mr. Mason, I was just discussing. Adding retention. Word on. Or that's a better, adding retention, so we can stay know that we want to do it.
And maybe it'd be really big.
Ma- mayor, could you repeat your motion? I couldn't hear it, I'm sorry.
You know what? I'll, I'll let me. I'll just, I'm just going to make a motion to post to our meeting. With correct paperwork and recording and financial budgets included.
I would like to just, yeah, put how much money we got, where we're going to.
There's no need to make a motion and that's just going to like, let's just move it. Yeah, yeah, so let's just postpone it for actually next meeting. To have correct wording and make sure we have the right finances and see exactly. As we go, we need to prepare exactly what we have left, what we've used, what we've used it for, I think. You know.
Nine hundred ninety three thousand.
Mayor? May I make, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, of course.
Um. I would like to suggest that, that our city manager perhaps meet with his department heads. Between now and the next meeting, if I was hearing you properly, I'm not sure I was, and if I wasn't, I apologize. And look at sort of the needs and benefits for the city and put together a, a sort of a full and comprehensive. List of needs for us to look at. Coming up from, from the departments, you know, like. And I'm just making this up, so this is not, I'm just, I literally, I'm just making this up, this is just as an example, like. Do we need a vacuum truck? Do we need an ambulance? Do we need to pay personnel for something special? Do we need to look at, you know, some drainage things, equipment for drainage? Because, you know, there, we have an opportunity to, to buy some new equipment with this money or we can do some projects. So I think it's important as the city manager that he go and meet with his team and look at what are the needs of the city. And then bring, and then bring them to us, and maybe that's what you all were saying, and I couldn't hear you, and I'm apologizing for that, so there you are.
Other discussion, I think if you want to put that on as an agenda item, I think it's a wonderful idea, but that's, that's. This discussion for this motion or this discussion, I just want to keep it to point, but I think let's put that, if you want to put that on the agenda. We think that would be great.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll do that then, thank you, ma'am.
The list was already compiled in August, and we'll make this in it.
Well, that was just potential budget, what they wanted for the wish list.
The wish list, yeah.
Yeah, I think the minister referring to what we do specifically with the COVID.
But, but I, I'm just curious if it was part of the, I can't remember off the top of my head if it was part of our budget discussions already and we included that or not.
The stuff that we, the police department wished us and the fire department wished, some of that we were going to pay.
Correct, that's all it is.
Yes.
Just know exactly, that's, know what part of it was.
Okay, so, so Mr. Lynn, so that's a good idea, which is if you would put that on a Jane dump for next month. So that's the simple discussion, and then we have an address as next month as well, and then if you guys.
Yes, ma'am, I will, and, and I'll be happy to, to help with that as well, not just like dumping on someone, so yes, ma'am, I will.
So we're ready to G, I think H, city manager report.
Yes. Yeah, I was going to talk about the fall fest that we're having on October twenty ninth. We had budgeted forty hundred, we got fifteen hundred dollars worth of donations, which we just, what we did, we put it on our flyer. People donated and so it's great, thank you, Councilman Tolan, to donate it also. We've already so far spent three thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars. And that's less projected, we didn't spend one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. So what we leave, what we still need to buy is pumpkin pies for the pumpkin pie eating contest. Some prizes for the, the games and candy. So we all have enough to.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Any questions for Mr. Mason?
Depressions are.
Are you going to give a good candy? A good candy.
I know, yeah. Any other questions? Motion to go into executive session? I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss city manager, it means evaluation. I'm sure we will make another matter to go into executive session, second in line, Mr. Chris Howard. Gosh, I don't think my name's.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Orrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebell?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes. And we are going to executive session seven twenty.
Do, do I need to zoom back in or how's this going to work?
Mask, and I need just explain to me that we need to turn down, but I noticed to pull this from Mr. Lynn.
That's why, um, thank you.
Well, that's right.
Is there anybody, what's, what did you say is recording?
Well, that camera over there, I wasn't aware that even though it's not working and we don't have access to it. I was told that it's still running, that's why Chief would get up there and do something to stop it or whatnot. So I didn't know that, but frankly, vice is yesterday, right?
So to, so to go into executive session, we have to go to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Like it's still going to a hard drive.
Right.
Yes.
Would that, would you quickly move so Mr. Tony can join us, please?
Does she have to log on or she can do it?
Well, what if I just joined by audio on a cell phone or something like that, like on a speakerphone? Somebody could call me on their cell phone or I could call them, would that work?
Perfect, I'll call you from my cell phone in two minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good idea, sorry, we hadn't come out here, but this will probably take a long time. But thank you for coming.
So right now.
We had the old school.
Over there.
So we're going to pause, right?
No. That was just, that's new, right?
Because it was, it, we. We were muted earlier.
Okay.
Anyway, so then that's it, that's it, that would be.
So, orita lo voy a volver a.
Don't pause it, go to, I mean, don't stop it, go to pause there, that one.
His back in session, we reconvened.
I don't think it's serious.
Eight thirty eight P M. No discussion, motion to adjourn. Motion made by the mayor to adjourn, second in line is the world. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes, she got time.
No, I don't. Uh, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Orrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebell?
Yes.
Mayor Smith? Yes.
Had a great time today, guys, thank you.
I'm sure you did.
You have, you have.
Okay, yeah.